Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Marion City Council meeting Monday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the United States of Maryland.
Public for which is Dan.
For a roll call, please show all members of council present, except for Councilmember Shani, who is absent today. First up, we have the approval of the minutes from the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four combined meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion in regards to that?
Move to accept the minutes.
Looking for a second? Any further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Well, next up, we have the oath of office. For Officer David Beck. If you'd please join us up here.
Congratulations.
Up next, we have council member's statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Would any council member like to make a statement? Hearing none, I'm proceeding forward to adoption Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash fifteen water allocation for December. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Move to accept the water allocation.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Carries. Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash sixteen fee scheduled for two thousand and twenty-five. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Motion to approve the fee schedule for two thousand and twenty-five.
Looking for a second? Any further questions, comments, concerns by council?
Only that we, going into next year, we look at raising some of these fees to try to recapture our actual costs because we're just so far below. We're not recovering our costs and doing these things.
I know, we'll discuss that during the mid-
As we go through our budget process, I think.
Yeah, the budget process, okay. I couldn't remember if we were doing that mid-year, if we were waiting for the next fiscal, next fiscal, right?
Right, we'll start, we'll start reviewing it as we go through the budget, which start, we usually start in January at the staff level.
Sounds good.
I don't know if it would be a major increase to the budget one way or the other, but it, at least recover our costs of doing these things.
Any further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Carries, city manager report. Jim, you got anything?
Have a couple. We had some discussion. Really, it was more, was more on the Main Street report, but we talked about it under city manager report Wednesday. And a couple of the things I couldn't answer then, do have answers for now. So the, we already talked about the music that was weather-related. It turned out the, the, the band cancellation was a mutual agreement. So, on the question of who chose, who hosted activities? That was a combination of what came back in the survey results. Some other businesses had made statements about not wanting to participate, so those were kind of ruled out. As were ones that said they didn't respond, that they were interested in, in being involved in Main Street. From there, I think there was just, there was one that was based on some, a situation that happened in a previous year with a volunteer with an activity going on in one of the storefronts, so that was basically how some of those were ruled out. So, the greenery in front of the police department in City Hall. That there is a beautification fund at the community foundation, and that's the, we haven't been invoiced yet, but that's the fund that will be targeted from.
That's a separate, where does that, where does that fund, how is that funded?
I believe that's under, under Main Street, but it's a separate category.
The answer to my question is that Main Street did fund the, the planters in front of city buildings and, and nothing. Main Street funds in front of any of the businesses.
That's my understanding, is it's a subfund, a subfund of Main Street.
I, I just, I just wanted to be clear about it. I, I, yes.
That's my, that's my understanding.
All right, thank you.
The American Express kits, Director Mieschi indicated that we did get kits, but they were kind of sparse this year. And he decided that it would be better to hold the materials because there were small quantities of everything. And that by not doing them this year, he was hoping that next year he'll have a larger stock of materials to be able to distribute through the businesses. Using the example of bags that were distributed, that there weren't, weren't enough to, to go around for everybody.
How, how, how does American Express, or, do they come directly from American Express? How are those, how is that stuff allocated?
Yes.
Who allocates the amounts? Is there a request that goes out? How is that handled?
I think it's, Director Mieschi just responded that, and he was out of the office today, so this was via email. That he did obtain an American Express package. As with the recent trend, the contents are not the same quality as in the beginning of the Small Business Saturday program. It just had open, closed, non-adhesive placards to be put in the front window. Ten blue posters that said Small Business Saturday. Twenty branded canvas bags. So with those quantities, he decided that it would be better to save them and put them with materials that he had from last year. In hopes that next year have enough to have a reasonable amount to actually go around and distribute to the businesses. Whether that was the perfect call or not, but that was the, so he did, he did reach out to them at least.
I understand. It's no, it's not, it's pointless to argue the reasoning at this point in time.
And the Carroll County downtown's passports, he did not stress that because previous years have shown that Tonny Town has had very little, very little response for those compared to other municipalities. Last year, there were twenty-seven passports in total, whereas other towns, and he used Hampstead as an example, since they're about the same size as us, had three hundred and nine. So either the, you know, it doesn't sound like everybody's really jazzed about them to push them.
Well, it's also a question of whether, how that was publicized and, and, and how those things were distributed. So it's, it's, you know, it's not a population-based thing, and it's more of a, you know, are we pushing this? Are we, are we being part of what we should be in terms of the broader mission in that regard in the county?
At any rate, that was the explanation as to why it wasn't emphasized this year. I think, I think that touched on the things that I wasn't able to answer Wednesday. Let's see. Questions from Wednesday?
Questions, comments, concerns for the city manager report? Hearing none, proceeding forward to department reports. Question, comments, concerns by council regarding department reports? Proceeding forward, down to legal report, Jay.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to take a couple of minutes just to talk to you and put our closed session in context. I know we're going to be talking about land acquisition tonight, and we're going to talk all about that then. But there have been a lot of moving pieces for, well, more than many months about the future of the developments in town, the future of the bypass in town, and we've given you a few like snippets here and there. Like I told you, we're working to acquire the easement from Flowserve that would serve as where the bypass hits one forty. The easement document was sent to them this month, so that is going out there. And so you can imagine, that's one piece.
Oh, and we lost Jay.
Well, we'll give him a moment to return here. While we're waiting, Jim, on the old business for Main Street discussion, is that all you had for that? I know it was a separate line item.
So Wednesday, we talked a bit, and we bounced back and forth. And I wasn't sure what the end result, as far as any consensus was, on how we wanted to approach the-
Well, I thought we were, I thought the, we had kind of had homework to go back and take a look at that and, and talk about how we want to do it.
That was suggested, so I was hoping that, have that conversation tonight. Here it is, so.
Okay.
And Jay's back.
No, I guess I lost you there.
You're gonna-
So I assume you didn't hear anything I said. That, that, is that the easiest way to go?
Pretty much.
Flowserve.
Yeah, you're at Flowserve. We were at that part.
Right. So you know, we're trying to acquire the Flowserve easement for the bypass. And that would be one point of where the bypass would hit one forty. So the next piece of the puzzle is to deal with how we're going to secure the bypass through the rest of the property over to one ninety-four, and that would deal with Mountain Brook development. And you know, we're trying to keep the planning commission in the loop because they are currently reviewing Mountain Brook's plans. And so the next step for that development is to come up with the developers' rights and responsibilities agreement. That would deal with a lot of issues, but the biggest issue would deal with how are you going to secure a bypass? That's going to take more than just the present time to build, right? It's going to be phased in, and you want to make sure you're secured. Remember how we had the bridge at O'Brien? We don't want to live through that again, so this is the idea of how you'd secure that. So you got that moving piece, you got the Flowserve moving piece, you got the acquisition pieces that we're going to talk about tonight that deal with like recharge and things like that. And so the timetable to put all these things together, it seems like we had a long time to do it, but it's all going to come together in the next several months. So you all need to be prepared for that. Our schedule internally is that we would have the developers' rights and responsibilities agreement to you by February. Because we don't want to agree to the Flowserve easement until we have the rest of the road lined up, and we don't want to agree to the rest of the road until we have the Flowserve easement lined up. So it, it's a circular thing, I'm telling you tonight, but I don't want any surprises because, you know, we have the holidays, then we have the January meetings, and then we're right there. So we'll talk more about the details that have to make things happen in our closed session, but that's what's been going on a lot. There's been a lot of easement work, a lot of document work. There's other easements we're getting from Flowserve for sidewalks and things like that. So they're all coming together, and we really can't have a misstep. So that's, was I want to talk about, we'll talk more about some stuff in the closed session.
Sounds good, Jay. Thank you.
Jay, can I ask a question?
Sure.
We had had a kind of a back and forth, and I was going to ask you on Wednesday before you were ill, and I'm glad to see you're feeling better. There was just a little bit of question about some camera placement in the city. And we never got to hear from you about, you know, just what appropriate actions would be. And I'm wondering if you could update us on that? Or is that something we have to have a separate discussion about?
I mean, I, I can give you the, the general outline and see what you guys have any questions about, but the issue came up a couple of weeks ago. I, I assume the cameras in the town were being updated. I think that's what Dan Dennis told me, there were some new technology coming out. And the issue came, was brought to my attention, saying, is there any liability concerns about eliminating certain camera positions in the police department? And so I gave the concern to Mr. Dennis and to the city manager, saying that there's always concern when you don't have a plan about how you're doing things. And of course, a plan just can't be a willy-nilly thing thrown together. The cameras were put in for a reason, but the police department's different than all the other departments, you know, all their employees. They carry guns, they have rooms with locked weapons, they have rooms with other people's property in it. So security and surveillance is different than in other areas of the city. And so the concern that I expressed was without a, a plan, a, that was basically blessed, that you should have, you should have a plan, at least an action, you just shouldn't do it one way or the other. And I think that the emails went back and forth, and I never really got involved in the mix, but the question was, who has the authority to do that? This usually isn't a big deal, but the authority question would be, who has the authority to come up with a plan? And obviously, you want to deal with your department head, your police chief, about what he thinks is needed. You hear that from other department heads, when you talk to Kevin from Public Works and so on and so forth. And then the city manager, of course, is the one that has to determine what he presents. The police department is a little different because in the code, there's a section that deals with the policies and procedures. It's under the department's headlines in the code, and it basically talks about policies, procedures, and duties, and they all refer back to the council, the council adopting policies and procedures. So if you look at surveillance in the police station being a policy and procedure, something that is the administration of police affairs, then the council should weigh in on that. And regardless of the who struck John, should they do that or not? The question that I raised was, if there's a question of future liability, shouldn't we have protecting our people? Because the question will be asked, who made this decision? Was it the chief? Was it the city manager? Was it Dan Dennis? Shouldn't we protect them by the council being the one, the mayor and council, saying, we decided this as a city? And that was basically it. We've had issues in the past, as you know, where the police department has relied on the cameras for, for, for lots of different things. And so that's the frux of what I communicated to the city manager, and I, I really haven't been involved since then.
Sounds good, Jay. I just got one question. So when they originally put the cameras up, you know, I was told it was the previous chief, Chief Etsler, I think it was, correct me if I'm wrong. But you know, when I was, when we talked with Dan over there, you know, I was told that this was mainly just a conversation between Dan and the chief when they were putting the cameras up and arranging the positions originally. So, you know, I'm wondering why it is now the council prerogative to become involved in camera placement? And anybody who's taken the time to actually go down there and to look at the cameras, I believe, would understand why the concerns were raised on the cameras being placed on personnel work areas. So, you know, I hope the council members who are bringing this up have actually taken the time to go down there and look at the placement, because it isn't the exact same placement that the previous chief had either. Not only that, one of the main concerns that was addressed was that there was no camera in the evidence room. So for the longest time, while council has purview of a camera placement apparently, you know, if there was no policy put in place to actually have a camera in the evidence room, one of the, one of the key places you would have a camera in a police department. And, you know, that, I mean, that strikes me as a little odd as well. There was no camera in the, like, the actual army part of the police department either. Both those, I think, have been, have been fixed. We have cameras in there now. And the only cameras that have been moved are the cameras that were directly on workplace environments. You know, that's where the officers are, you know, going to do their work, that's where they're putting their items for the day. You know, you go through that police department, you'll see there's cameras at every door, every entrance. And again, this is, these are suggestions that were made by the chief on where he wants them, and it's the same thing I told the city manager and Dan Dennis is, is that it also states in our code that the man, that the management of the police department is left to the police chief. I believe that camera placement, as far as his department goes and the liability there, would be left with the police chief. Again, I, I find it strikingly odd that a council of legislators would even get involved in camera placement, or even, again, you could say a policy of, hey, I want ten cameras down at the police department, I want entrances and exits covered. But if council really wants to get into the policy of it and make a policy that you're going to actually monitor people in the work area, especially law enforcement officers, you know, that just, that strikes me as very odd.
Well, I mean, I guess I, I'm looking at it from a different perspective in that, first of all, all of our employees, there's no expectation of privacy in the public workplace. Obviously, you're not doing changing rooms, bathrooms, and things like that, so it's fair game for the employee and for management to have cameras there. And I think that back when the cameras were put in, Henry Heine, when it started, was the city manager, and I'm, he was involved in it at the time where he was putting cameras or wanted cameras, and I think they've been improved. The question I have isn't one of authority of who gets to decide, it's more of who do you protect your people? Because if a camera has been moved, and it was the department head or the city manager that did that, the question will be asked, why was that moved? And then there's always the issue, well, did you have the authority? Could you move it? And that's why I'm saying is that anytime we institute something new that we're concerned about having the city stand behind it, we usually like to elevate it beyond that. But the actual placement should be something that is determined by the management of the town. I mean, and it ends with the city manager. The police department is supervised by the police chief, but the code says that ultimately, it's the city manager's decision. And so that's my concern. You know, we have had, as I said, some black eyes in the past that the cameras have helped assist us and protect us. And it is a different work environment down there than the rest of the city office, the people that are interacted. There are locked doors that people come into in both the city office and the police department. There are people that go into the work areas of the employees. I mean, I've seen videos of that where people come in to use the phone or to interact, and they're all positive things. But my question would be, we don't want to say, why did we? And if the council and the, and the manager decide this is the best plan, that would be my thought. To summarize, the way I heard this come about was, there was no plan. It was a plan from IT, it was a plan from the police department, and it was being done, in my understanding, like, within twenty-four hours of the person coming, and I said that there should be a plan blessed because somebody needs to be held accountable. That's the bottom line.
And to add to that, I did go down and look at the cameras and had a conversation with Dan Dennis, who spoke with me about his concerns about coverage. And the, the real interest for me, as with anywhere in the city, is to have as much coverage as possible, especially in areas where you're dealing with cash being exchanged, you know, just any of the entrances, anywhere they're dealing with the public. There, it doesn't appear to be a clear view of the front window of what's going on, coming from the other direction. And, and, you know, even in Parks and Rec, we keep discussing about how we want to get more cameras at the parks because you need to have as much coverage as possible. I don't understand at any point where you would say, well, let's just not put it there for no other reason than, I don't even know that there is a good reason.
The reason would be, people don't want to work on camera twenty-four seven. And not only that, the only other issue would be-
It's a job place where you're dealing with the public, and there has to be a certain amount of protection.
And like, and like you said, the-
And that comes with the city, caring about what the city needs.
My, my worry is, is, have you looked, I mean, have you looked at other places where cash and transactions are taking place?
Yes, I have, in fact, and, and I talked to some other police departments who talked about their camera placements and what works for them. I went and spoke with another officer just about what is that expectation? And they say they don't have cameras in the break rooms, they don't have them in the locker rooms, all the obvious areas, and, you know, that's why-
In the break room, so like maybe areas where the officers are putting their stuff?
And again, I, there's not, I'm not saying that every single thing up there had to be done a specific way. The question was, when there's a difference of opinion, should it not then come for a bigger discussion to keep things out in the open, to watch for any liability that may come back? And transparency is a huge word. I don't know why there was just this big rush to, to, you know, change things when it could have been done in a very simple manner. He could have had the cameras put up, and then if there was a question after the fact, then it could have been discussed.
Then we could have paid for the contractor to come out and redo it, but the biggest-
No, because the cameras can be, can be shifted, and I, and I understand it was about the contractors, but directionally, I feel like the IT guy would know, I mean, he would have an-
More about what to do at the police department than the police chief.
He would have a very good idea of what areas the cameras would cover to the best extent.
Normally, IT and any kind of government rule is a facilitation kind of rule. It isn't a dictate, it doesn't dictate.
Very much like a bicyclist who just picks and chooses which rules he wants to follow. I'm trying to follow the rules and how the policies are supposed to work.
Well, the rules also say that the police chief is the manager of the police department. I'm sorry, but council, you are not police officers.
Nobody said they were. It's called using some common sense, but if there's been some situations where we've needed cameras in the police department before, I don't-
Name an instance.
Jay, would you like to name an instance?
When the two former police chiefs ago took the machine guns from the evidence room. The evidence room wasn't monitored, the evidence hallway wasn't monitored, there was no evidence about that.
Okay, so my only question would be, when these new cameras were put in place, no camera was put in the evidence room until I came down there and directed that a camera would be put in the evidence room? So if, I'm just-
And again, I'm not saying, again, that it should have been that way. But when you have the chance to correct a situation, why do you make excuses and gaslight everybody instead of just saying, let's do it the right way?
So like, put in a camera in the evidence room? Yeah, that's correcting the, that is correcting it.
You're talking about one camera. I'm talking about an overall situation.
So again, one of the points that you made was not having them, you know, on break areas and stuff like that. That's one of the cameras that we moved, that got moved over to the evidence room.
And that's great.
There's only two, there's only two cameras that have been moved.
I, I'm just saying, there was a situation brought to our attention, a difference of opinion that could have completely been alleviated if there had been a discussion allowed.
And you got this involved when the previous police chief put the cameras up initially?
Actually, we had a discussion with him in a closed session about some of that situation. Sorry you weren't invited, but yes, we did have discussions about cameras.
And then, so you, you remember the placements and everything like that, that you directed for that?
Counted on Dan Dennis, the camera guy, to help with that.
Is he the camera guy or the IT guy? Here's my thing, is you have a police chief who manages the police department. Why wouldn't you trust him?
But he's not a camera guy either, so I don't understand the comparison.
I imagine he knows what entrances and exits you'd want to watch as opposed to an IT specialist.
I'm just saying, coverage, it's not about-
We literally added more coverage to more vulnerable areas than before.
I don't, I don't think that's true. That's not what I was explaining. That's not what I saw on the cameras.
So you don't believe adding to the evidence room is enhanced coverage? You don't believe-
There's a camera in the evidence room, I believe, that is like five or six years or older.
There was no camera in the evidence room? We moved one of it.
I know, that's what you're saying. Like, that one seemed kind of like overkill, like you're putting a camera in a, in a room where there really isn't as much-
No, so we actually went back and looked at this. The, the camera is actually in the new evidence room right now, it's not in the old evidence room.
And that's, that's great. Now, is there a camera that now follows the procedure all the way through when evidence is brought in?
From when?
From the time it comes in out of the car?
From the cameras.
There was a discrepancy there.
Describe the discrepancy.
My understanding was there was an area where there should be a camera, where the evidence is supposed to be signed in or processed, and it did not have appropriate coverage at that point. Now, again, I have not been there or talked to him in several days, so that may have changed because I know that it was an ongoing thing.
Did you talk with your police, did you talk with your police chief at all, the guy who is the manager of the police department regarding any of this?
Oh, I spoke to the city manager, who was supposed to be the one I spoke to.
Oh, I appreciate that you should have done the due diligence and actually spoke to your police department about it.
Look, you always told us we're not allowed to do that.
Chief, I've never told you not allowed to speak to the police department. The only problem is, is you don't want to speak to the police. Anyways, chief, would you be able to elaborate on the instance of the evidence and making sure that it's on camera as it's being brought through the station? and making sure that it's on camera as it's being brought through the station?
Counsel, I do have a plan. I, I wish the cameras to protect the citizens, the police department, and the city. That they should be placed on every end, ingress and egress, and they cover all the hallways. And that's very adequate. The prior police chief was allowed to have that input. And I would appreciate if I could have that input as well. When this was taking place, and that means the replacement of the cameras, I really didn't have much opportunity to weigh in. Was told that the cameras would be replaced, a one-for-one as they were. However, there were two 360-degree cameras placed, one over the work area of the officers. And it can zoom in. I had multiple complaints from the officers about their workspace. And then the other one was placed over the administrative assistance area. And which also gave concern because it can zoom in on her workplace all the time. I contacted the Sykesville chief, the Manchester chief, and spoke with the commander and the Carroll County Sheriff's Office. And I asked them how they structured or placed their cameras. They did so in a similar matter to my wishes. They have them on the doors. They do have one on evidence and their armory, which we do now. But nothing on the personal space. And, you know, there's more than just physical security of a building. When you're the police chief, you run the department. And you have to also manage morale. And morale is important when the officers are asking me, what, what don't they, why don't they trust us? Why are they watching us? What are we doing? What, what, what is the history? And I have to answer these questions and quite frankly, deal with the police union too. In my previous job, I had quite a few employees, about 350. I had state purview, state responsibility, the whole state of Maryland. And I had, I don't even know how many facilities I had, buildings I had, but dozens. Some had cameras and some didn't. And I was able to make responsible decisions in that job. I assure you, I can make responsible decisions at this one facility. And another, like, basic management and HR practice number one rule is treat everybody the same. And I voiced my concerns to the city manager regarding the fact that there was one city employee in Tony Town that had a camera constantly monitoring her personal workspace. While the cameras installers were there, I asked for this camera to be removed. The camera could easily be described as unfair treatment and basically harassment. Whereas the replacement camera concentrating on the administrative assistant could be zoomed in to monitor extremely close activity. And it could be zoomed in to my office and see what I was doing. I also want to know, what am I doing? What, what, who do I ask? I, I asked the IT manager why we're doing this. He tells me to refer to the city manager. I asked the city manager, tells me to refer to the IT. What, tell, tell me, I, I, I'm responsible for this agency. I want to do a good job. I'm proud to have this job. I'm proud of the men and women that work for us. We're just, we're not saying, oh, my God, don't have cameras, don't make the city safe. But I think as a department head, I should have some viable input into this decision. I think everyone should be treated the same. That one camera should not be on that, that employee. If you, if you want to deal with liability, that's a whole different issue. Let's just, it's, it's really nonsense that we're even talking about this. Just let me do my job. I can do it.
Thank you, chief.
I think for, for, for my part, I will say that, you know, ordinarily, and, and I believe I expressed this in the email that, that I sent back, that ordinarily, the placement of cameras is not something that we as a council should be involved in. However, we had an employee raise an issue concerned about liability. And, you know, there, the question was, should we stop what we're doing until we address this issue? The mayor made the decision not to. In the end, I'm not going to make, pass any judgments about that decision. But what I will say is that I met that afternoon with the chief. He walked, we walked around the building together. We looked at the camera placements. The one thing that I haven't had the opportunity to do yet, which I still plan to do, is to, to meet with the IT director and make sure that, you know, that we are, you know, look at each camera and make sure that we are, are covering it. I have one particular concern, which is that the camera that's in the foyer at the police department is on the same wall as the service window, pointing kind of outward. So that there is no view of what's happening on the city side, as it were, of that window. And I would like to see that covered. But that's, that was the only comment that I had based on what I saw. But again, I have not been over to see, over in the IT room, take a look at what exactly you see through cameras. But from what I saw, it seems as though we have, we are covered in our entrance and exit points and hallways. And, and now, like you said, in the evidence room and in the armory. So I don't have a final, final thing to say on that yet because I have not met with Dan and looked at the camera pla- you know, looked at the camera placements from, through the lens. But I'm pretty satisfied based on what I saw. So I, I don't know that it's not, it's, it's not council's duty to get involved in camera placements per se. But it is council's duty to react to a elevated complaint from, from, you know, the employee, you know, with the responsibilities that Dan has. I think, I think investigating is certainly the right thing to do and investigate.
Thank you, councilman. Jim, just to check, I know we got the new cameras installed at City Hall. I'm assuming, you know, since one of the concerns that has been raised by IT and by some of council is that, you know, we can't see the exchange of money and everything like that. Have we placed one directly in the finance office to make sure that we can see those exchanges?
We have not done that yet. I've had the conversation with, with our treasurer about that idea. She's receptive to the idea. I think it, you know, it would be a good practice in general to have a camera view on, on the cash drawers. You know, how we execute that, you know? We need to work out some details.
And I appreciate that we're heading towards that route now. But here's my only concern is that this isn't, this didn't become a problem until we realized that, you know, one single employee in one single area was being singled out. And, you know, this has been a common trend by the council member who actually is still pushing this by targeting and singling out the single employee. And I know we've had these conversations. I know I've had these conversations with council members. So for me to just see council keep coming back to items like this that really affect one particular individual and one particular department when there's other areas that could have been addressed. And again, it could have been addressed when the new cameras were coming in. But for some reason, that was an afterthought. The only time it was a thought was when it was the police department. And again, I have seen this behavior and this pattern by this same individual, the same council member who continues to go after this department. And I know I'm not the only one who feels that way. I know many at the police department feel that way. I know many residents in town have seen it. So I'm, I'm at a loss because I know I've, I've also expressed these concerns to the city attorney. And again, I know, I know a lot of you have worked, this council has worked with a lot of the staff for a while now. So I know there's probably some hesitancy to try to hold some people accountable. But this is becoming alarming at this point, that this single employee is being individually picked out every single time. This department is being picked out every single time. And, you know, and it doesn't seem like the rest of my council is very concerned about it. But me, I've been concerned about it from day one, the moment I stepped into office, when me and you had to go move cameras that were directly placed on that employee. And-
It's an area. And you, you, you like to make situations that don't exist. I don't care if the camera is facing just the window. I don't care what the employee does all day. But if there is a cash drawer there and it's a police department, if somebody came into that front room and started shooting at that window, shouldn't we have some kind of real view, just like we have at the parks?
Of the shooter, you do.
Not if it's from the side.
Or no, you do from the side. Have you seen, have you seen, have you seen the camera view of that interior? You actually have a full view of everything from when you walk in that door to the bathroom. You can actually see the Christmas tree that is on the far right side of when you walk into that vestibule.
I'm just saying, we should have as much coverage of certain areas as possible.
Well, here's my thing is, I don't know why I'm arguing with someone who hasn't even done their homework on the subject. This is what bothers me. And Jim, I know, again, her, her comment now is that, you know, the camera is placed on an area. But I have to ask you, have you received a complaint from this councilwoman regarding an individual that has been targeted before by this councilwoman as far as where they're going and everything like that during work hours?
What?
I don't think that we're headed down an appropriate road.
Well, again, I, I'm, I'm sick and tired of the police department being targeted by this councilwoman. And I'm sick and tired of a council who is just enabling her. And not only that, city staff who are enabling her to do it.
Well, maybe if the city staff were taken seriously as much and given as much attention as you seem to feel like the department, the police department needs, I don't, you're discrediting every other employee who brings an issue to you. Dan Dennis had an issue. He brought it to us and we asked to actually have a discussion about it. And it was, it was refused. And you make things up in order to fit your agenda. And it's ridiculous.
I won't say anymore because I do believe it'll put the city at risk. But I-
This will be the first time you ever cared about the city.
Councilmember Fuller put more work into this, this role as mayor in the past two-
Have you typed off Facebook?
In the past two years than you have in eight years.
That's bull.
I guarantee you that. And again, you can try to make, you can try to make that plea to the residents as much as you want. But I put in hours and hours and hours of time. And most of it, it's cleaning up your mess of four years, well, eight years. And again, um-
You're full of it.
Okay, councilwoman. I, I will just, again, state that I, I am tired of the department being singled out by this councilwoman. And I am tired of the singular employee, employee being singled out by this councilwoman. And again, if the city attorney doesn't want to take it seriously, if the city manager doesn't want to take it seriously, you know, I'm at a loss at what to do except for, again, try to be receptive to the public that, yes, stuff is messed up here. And it doesn't seem like anybody actually wants to take action on it. And again, we can go, we can go further into it.
You say that the city attorney doesn't take it seriously. This is not the forum for this. This is the forum we always end up in for grandstanding. We've had discussions about what personnel stuff should be done. All the discussions we've had tonight, you know, if you look at the, everybody just wanted to talk about the cameras, is what I understand.
That everybody want to talk about the cameras is, I, the only thing I've heard is that councilwoman Fuller wanted to bring the subject back up and push it. It was already settled. We already had the cameras moved. And not only that, we enhanced coverage by putting it in the armory and the evidence room. So the fact that she's going to sit here and claim that somehow we have restricted coverage, the only thing that's been restricted is a 360 camera that was above the workstation of the employees and a camera that was watching the city administrator and directly into the chief's office.
I, I think that the point isn't the end result, at least in my mind. It's the process that you use to get there. So if anybody has any questions, if the ideas that are being put out are the best ideas in the world, then there shouldn't be any problems in discussing them. And at least that was the question that was brought to me was, is there any potential liability? Yes, there's potential liability if you don't have a plan, all sorts of ones. We don't talk about that in public. We don't talk about these types of things that invite liability to the people we're supposed to protect. But if there's a question about any type of policy, what is the harm of talking about it? And I guess that's the thing is that when you say you don't take things seriously, the end result is far less important than the process. And so I haven't ever heard that there was a process to discuss this. There was an email that was circulated and everybody talked about it and whistleblower status and all these things were thrown out. And it was simply said, well, we can talk about this at the next meeting.
Again, the, the idea that council is even talking about camera placement to begin with is ridiculous. We have a chief of police. And the code specifically says the chief of police is the manager of the police department. Yes, there's a city manager. And yes, he's the supervisor of the police chief. But Jim is not a police officer. He's not a chief of police. Neither is Judy Fuller. If you want the job, councilmember Fuller, you should apply for it next time. And again, councils are not police. The city manager is not police. Why are you trusting somebody who's not police to manage the police department?
I think you're conflating the two issues because, you know, it is not, as you say, it's not generally the council's purview to review camera placements, except that in this case, an issue was raised by a senior staff member who was concerned about liabilities. And so when that is raised to council, it becomes incumbent upon council to look into it.
That's fine. This is what I will say. When I was at MNO, the first year that I was here, the senior staff member who has complained about the camera that is no longer on the administrative assistant there, I mean, he came up to me, he came up to my wife and specifically said, you know, what the administrative assistant is saying isn't the full story behind all of this. So again, when you're talking about a senior official that is managing the cameras, you know, it, it makes me worried that, and again, I know, I know that, I know that, I know that, I know that senior, I know that senior official was good friends with the police chief that made his exit.
That we shouldn't be-
We shouldn't. But if you guys want to press the issue and if she wants to press cameras, then we will make it an issue. Because I'm tired of letting her get away with whatever she pleases. And I know she has a city attorney behind her, that's fine. And I know, Jim, you're hamstrung by it because council will fire you if you go against them. But this is ridiculous.
Well, I, I'm going to end it with one last comment, is that I have pointed out to you all before the section of the code that you certainly have the power to change if you don't like it, where it talks about the police policies. It's in the code. And it says, "The mayor and city council, from time to time, by resolution, can adopt a police manual for the purpose of regulating the conduct of the members of the police department and the administration of police affairs and may, from time to time, amend, modify, or repeal by resolution."
And just to check, they put a policy in place when they put the cameras there originally, right?
I don't know if there's a policy or not, but there should be one. I'm assuming that there's a policy, is there a policy for the armory? Is there a policy for those types of things?
So-
And so my point in bringing that to your attention is, it's not murky. There is an effort in this code that says the council should be involved in the oversight. I don't really care that you guys don't like the answer there. It's just to say, the council should be involved. That's all. And we're going to do an entire police manual where the council is going to need to approve how things happen at the police department. And if you don't like that, you can repeal Section 11.7 and 11.6. I mean, but that's, when you say the city attorney doesn't care and doesn't get involved, it's my job to point those things out to you.
But the idea that a policy is actually going to dictate the actual placement of the cameras is-
Well, why wouldn't there be one?
For the, for the actual placement of the cameras, like where they're going, you think that should be in a policy?
There should be a plan for it, certainly. And there ought to be a policy about what, what particular areas are covered, you know? And if that policy doesn't, if that doesn't exist in our current policy, I don't know, I know we are in process, if I understand it correctly, of a new manual that we ought to, that ought to be something that's in the manual or in the new policy manual.
Chief, if you don't mind me-
Talk about what areas should be covered.
Chief, if you don't mind me asking-
I think at this point, we can end this conversation with that.
I have one more question. And I'm, I'm glad you're trying to end it, but I will ask the chief a question. And the new manual that is being prepared by, what, what organization is it being prepared by again? Lexipol. Did you see anything in there that shows direct placement of cameras? I mean, obviously, it wouldn't be, right? Because they don't know how to do, you know, they don't even know what our police department looks like. But they are, they are a standard for police policy. Again, I have never heard the idea that somehow you're going to actually manage a police department, the actual management, such as actually where you're going to put those cameras by writing a policy. That is ridiculous.
Well, I guess that's funny because you have a policy about body worn cameras. You have a policy about in-car cameras.
Does, does the, does the body worn camera, again, I, I know, this is, this is a whole different story because you're talking about placement on a building. But, I mean-
Why wouldn't you have such a policy?
Yeah, I'm su- again, we can have a policy that says we should have security cameras at the entrances and exits of a police department. But the actual placement? Why would you have it for the actual placement? Because we already, we have the entrances and exits. And that's what's bothering me is we have the entrances and exits. She wants additional ones on the actual workstations of the officers.
I don't care where you put them. What I am trying to say is that enacting a policy protects all your employees because it's not their decision then. It's the council's decision.
On where the cameras go.
On what your policy is about it.
Not about where the cameras are, but what the policy is about what the cameras are.
That's, that's fine. But the argument that she's trying to make isn't, isn't a policy on cameras. It's where the cameras are.
It's taking the information that we were given by another employee who does nothing but deal with cameras regularly on the best practices for where to put the cameras.
I mean, your policy can be simple. Ingress, egress, common areas, cash drawer, armory. You, you should be able to say those are the places that are covered. You don't have one at all right now. That's my point. You could have a policy that says, we're not going to have cameras.
I'm just confused. Why wouldn't Lexipol, you know, the, the place that's making policy for the police, police departments, why wouldn't they include something like this in there, saying at entrances, exits, common areas, and stuff like that? You know, I imagine it's probably because, you know, it's probably the management, the chief, the manager of the police department. chief, the manager of the police department. And again, the previous chief had this, had the ability to say, you know, where he wanted them. He basically told the IT guy, you know, this is what I want to see, you know, go ahead and put them up so I can see it. You know, I just don't get, I don't get why this chief in this department is different other than it's a new police chief and somebody didn't like the outcome of some things that have happened.
I don't see it as a power thing. I see it as a protection thing. It's no different than any other policy. We come up with a policy and we get it adopted so that it's not any one person's policy to say, why didn't you do this? I don't see it as any, I think it protects the chief. It protects anybody that we have those things. We put, when we do camera placements in the park, we talk about that.
And I assume we have a policy for camera placements in the park, correct?
Every camera in the park is vetted. I don't know...
But I don't care about vetted. I want to know, is there a policy for where these cameras should be placed in the parks?
I was involved in determining...
Is there a policy for where cameras should be placed in City Hall?
You're conflating the words policy and plan.
No, I'm not conflating.
You are. You are conflating the words policy and plan. A plan of how the cameras sit and where they look is different from a policy about what the cameras cover.
He just talked about, again, the entrances and exits. Why don't we have a policy that says they should be in the entrances and exits of City Hall?
Because it's not the police department. The police department is a different entity than the park.
I guess I try to diffuse this by making it very simple. If there was a camera change, and then there was a prisoner that escaped, and the prisoner then got injured at some point in time, and during the process, they say, well, was there a camera angle on that? And our answer would be, well, no. Well, was there ever a camera angle on it? Yeah, it moved. Who authorized the move? Wouldn't it be great to be able to say, the city council and the mayor approved a policy about where cameras would be?
I mean, what happens if somebody's at the park and we end up moving a camera, and that camera specifically had the angle where somebody dropped, hit their head? I mean, would that not, again, we need to make sure we have a policy for parks in rec. We need to make sure we have a policy for City Hall.
That's why we're trying to get more cameras.
But the policy is getting the cameras and directing where they should be?
Yes, and trusting Dan to put them in the best possible positions.
When did we make the policy? I'm confused. Yeah, I can't wait either. Trust me, it's coming up.
We've really gone off the rails here, but I would like to make a couple points of clarification. The previous system, there were camera views of the evidence vault door and the armory door, so...
But you can't see how it's being handled inside?
But you could not see the interior. You could only see, you know, who and what went in and out. But they did have some level of coverage. So I wanted to clarify that, that the doors were under surveillance.
Just to check, was the camera directly on the door, or was it like down the hallway?
It was in the hallway, I believe, near the door.
So again, the adequate coverage that we have throughout the police department, but somebody wants more.
Again, I just wanted to clarify that there was coverage on the doors, so they were not completely, you know, protected by the, you know...
Granted, it wouldn't matter, because again, you can see who comes in and out by the scans. So even if you have a camera in the hallway, again, you're seeing the exact same thing you're going to see by the scans, but...
Again, with all of this, I would like to be able to come to an agreeable resolution that affords the city the protections that we want, that works for the chief and the department, and move forward with it.
And that's all I ask, is that the chief gets to decide what he does with his department?
And hopefully get council's blessing on the final result. Today was the first day that I really had a good look at any of the camera views. We're still working on getting one of the cameras up. The chief and I had talked a couple days ago about when the 360 camera was relocated. That was intended to capture a certain view that now we don't have, that the chief would like to get that view back. So we have some changes we would like to make that I think we can all agree on, and I think we can come up with something that protects the city adequately and that you can support. So I would like the opportunity to work that out and come back to you with, you know, if you want the details of the placement of all the cameras, we can come back with that. If you just want, you know, the insurance that we're covering these certain things...
Honestly, I want to see a planogram of the views, the angles, everything like that.
You know, we can do it that way. But I would appreciate the opportunity to work it out with the chief and with, you know, with the IT department to make sure we're using the technology the best way that we can use it.
I'm sure you've got better things to do. I'm sure the chief's got better things to do, but I guess if we want to waste the residents' money...
We did have, you know, a conversation this afternoon about that, and I think we can come up with something that satisfies everybody.
Councilmember Fuller, do you have any more for cameras? Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council regarding legal report? Jay, did you have anything else?
Nope.
Sounds good, moving along. Old business, Main Street discussion. Jim, you want to lead up on it? I know you already said that you're just looking for a consensus on the direction that staff should take, whether there's specific items the council wants to tackle, or whether they want to go down the list, item by item, how it's already set up for the agreement. Counsel?
Well, I'd like to start with some more overarching things than the details. Because, you know, before we really can go into looking at point-by-point recommendations, we really need to talk about where we're headed and what we want to do. You know, the first question is the question of why? Why do we, why do we want to be a Main Street community? Why do we need to be a Main Street community? What are we getting out of this other than a lot of heartache and aggravation? You know, if it isn't, if it doesn't benefit the city, why are we doing this? You know, it needs to be more than just sidewalk chalk and watering plants, you know? And the other thing that we need to start from the base assumption is that this is not a city function. It has never been, it's never supposed to be a city function. This is a business function. This is a, this is supposed to be guided by the denizens of the Main Street District. So, you know, if we're going to try to do this as, you know, a top-down dictation from the economic development department, why are we even fooling with it? Because that's not Main Street. That's not what the program is, it's not what it's about. So I think we have to start with asking why? Why do we want to do this, to start with? Do we really want to be a Main Street? Is that, you know, given where we are, is that someplace we need to be at this time? Maybe it's someplace we, you know, you have argued in the past that, you know, maybe we're not really in a place for this yet. You know, the other side of that argument is that we're not in that place because we don't really have a properly operating Main Street program. So we need to really look at that and decide how we want to approach that, and do we really want to fund it? You know, are we willing to commit the funds to something like this that it needs to have? You know, when you look, when you go through Mr. Mieschi's report, and then you go to the appendix and you look at what other similar-sized towns are spending, you know, we're not measuring up. And, you know, if we're not going, if we don't want to commit the funds to it and commit to the mission, then we probably should just let it go. The next thing is, we need to really have an understanding of what the mission is. What are we trying to accomplish with this? You know, if we say, yes, okay, we think it's important, we want to be a Main Street community, we've been a Main Street community for 20-odd years, we should continue to do this. All right, what's the plan? What are we trying to accomplish with this? You know, are we, we should be, note that I wrote to myself here, you know, a livable, walkable, safe city core that is functional, appealing, and for most of the best interests of the wider community. All right, that's a, you know, a stab at a mission statement. You know, is that what we're after, or something similar to that? You know, we really need to understand if we want to, you know, if we say yes to the first question that we want to do this, what do we want to accomplish with it? What are we trying to get done? What's our mission? What's our why? Couple of other things that I think need to be talked about before we really get into too much depth on this. We talked about a boundary revision to include the post office and A&amp;W Country Meets and NAPA. I personally think it ought to be expanded to include the churches. There's talk about shortening the North End boundary all the way down to Church Street. I think that's a little too far, but we can talk about that. But is that part of the discussion that we want to have? Because that's something that really, that's recommendation number eight in, you know, in the thing, but I think that that's a large discussion that ought to be had first before we get into too many details. And the other thing that I think we need to do is define who the real stakeholders are, and what are the assets that we have to work with? You know, and with that, who are we marketing to? What's our marketplace? Who are we trying to sell to? You know, is this for the 1,000 to 1,500 people that live within walking distance of the square? Or is this for the tens of thousands of people that drive through here every day? Is this for the 10,000 people that come here and stay overnight every year? Is this for the 20,000-plus people that come here to go to weddings every year? You know, was our marketplace, what are we trying to sell? What do we have to sell them? And I think we need to really be clear about what all of these things are before we start going into point-by-point discussions about each of these recommendations. And I'm not saying that going point-by-point isn't a bad thing, once we know where we want to go. But I think until we decide where it is we want to go, I think we need to go any deeper into the point-by-point thing.
I know we talked about, and again, I know you're very passionate about the Main Street stuff. I do think, you know, you recommended, and we talked about it before, a separate workshop to actually hash it over. You know, my ask would be of council and of city manager, you know, if we can get something on the books for that for January. And again, I know, again, you, we're all passionate in all ways about it, but you are particularly passionate about it. My question would be, you know, would you be willing to set something up of what you would like to discuss? And again, we will come as a council, do the workshop, discuss it, and like you said...
Absolutely. I would happy to put it together that if...
Set the original vision of what we're looking at.
Right.
And then, you're right, we can't...
But I think, but until we really decide what our overarching mission is and what we're trying to accomplish, trying to nibble on the edges of the plan, you know, with each of your recommendations, I think is just a...
I do agree in that regard. We do have to create the vision and what the actual mission of it is before we can even figure out how we get, start moving towards that point. Again, I think that would be better served in an actual workshop that is dedicated to it.
All the questions that Councilman Tillman brought up are legitimate questions that need to be answered, and I don't disagree with addressing any of them, but the problem is that we can't get to the core of our issues in a council meeting forum. We need to set aside some time, a day or afternoon or some extended period of time, and maybe more than once, where we can sit down and just address these things among ourselves to try to come up with the best plan for our city. You know, I spoke about Gordonsville last Wednesday, and I was very impressed with that little town, and wanted to share some pictures with everybody, but I thought maybe that this isn't the right format to do that. I think we need to put a date on the calendar to get together and to vote, entire day or entire afternoon, or however many hours you want to set aside to begin the discussion on this, on Main Street. We have to be together. We can't be separate. We can't have one faction saying one thing and one faction saying another thing. We all got to be on the same page. Again, I keep saying it over and over again, it's all about leadership. We've got to be the leaders. And if we can convince our business community that we want to hear from them, we want their input, we want to see what they think about what we come up with, then I think we can, we're taking a step in the right direction to make this thing, you know, make it work. But, you know, simply bringing up a couple items from Mieschi's report, every council meeting, what do you think of these? Yeah, let's do those and move on to the next two items, or five items, or whatever it is, is not going to work.
So let me ask you this. Are we amenable to doing this on a Saturday, if that helps the business people?
I think that would be a lot better than a weekday.
You know, something that, something that the shop owners can...
I envision, I envision it...
And it's not just the shop owners, I mean, you know, it should be, you know, the landlords. I, you know, we need to invite all of the stakeholders and get everybody in a room and talk about what our direction is and what, you know, get as many of them there and get as many ideas as we can. I mean, in the end, it's going to fall to us to figure out how to make that work.
You do also have to remember that, again, the residents are also stakeholders and all this, so it should be...
Yes, you're right. And it'll be open, right? I'm not, I'm not saying we should close it, but I think...
My vision is to meet as a council, and during those meetings, have various segments of the downtown community present and discuss their needs with us and develop our plans based on what we hear. And we're talking about the landlords, and we're talking about the shopkeepers, and we're talking about the restaurant people and real estate people, and, you know, everybody, anybody that's got, any stakeholder in downtown...
Should be invited and allowed to speak, absolutely.
...have time to come before the committee and discuss their needs, and based on what we hear, we can put something together that should appeal to folks or to the stakeholders.
And I think we have some good information, you know, based on the survey that Mr. Mieschi did, and then also on the results of the comprehensive plan survey, which have a lot of good detail in it about what people are looking for. And we'll actually get some of that data coming back to us in January. We have the raw data now. We're going to get kind of a report from Arrow Consulting based on what they saw from the data and the interviews that they've conducted, and we'll have a much better picture then. So we could point to something like the third week of January, if you wanted to try to set a timeframe, and we'll try to figure out what works best for the folks involved, whether that, you know, if that is a Saturday, or if it's an earlier evening instead of waiting till 7:30, so, you know, that we can get a little bit more, try to get a little bit more participation. So with that, I will...
Rest of council, any feedback on that? I'm in agreement of setting a date, Jim, if you want to look into doing that. Again, reach out to council members.
The last thing I want is another meeting, but I don't know how to...
It won't happen without it. Jim, if you could, look towards the third week of January, that, I mean, again, make sure we can get as many council as possible at it so we can actually discuss it, but especially, you know, way after the holidays. Again, I think the third week of January is definitely a good buffer for that.
And you may want to ask Arrow if they're going to have their data assembled from the interviews and the survey that was done for the comp plan.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns regarding Main Street discussion? Hearing non-proceeding forward, new business monthly financial report. Comments, questions, concerns, or, sorry, looking for a motion in regards to that?
I move to accept the financial report.
Looking for a second? Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carrie's, accounts payables, looking for a motion in regards to that?
Move to approve the accounts payable.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Award of Westview Drive Line Replacement Project, looking for a motion in regards to that.
Motion to award the Westview Motor Drive Line Replacement Project.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
Did the motion include the who we're awarding it to?
Oh, yeah, my bad.
The C D M Smith recommendation was to award the bid to Stan Ballas Inc. authorized C D M Smith to issue the notice of intent and authorize the mayor to execute the agreements. Okay.
That's, you satisfied with that, or do you want, okay.
You want to make that again and include the.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just, just make sure we cover the bases there. Anyways, additional comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carrie's, C D M Smith, twenty twenty-five rate proposal, looking for a motion in regards to that.
Who do accept C D M Smith's rate proposal?
Looking for a second. Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carrie's, up next, we have approval of twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-three, or twenty thirty lease, Bolinger Park, Matthew Clark. Jim, did we have any additional, were you able to find any additional on those two?
I spoke with Lorena about that a bit, and she indicated that for the Bolinger Park one, the current tenant has already prepared the, the fields with, with crop at this point that may not be harvested before the contract ends in April. And her recommendation, which as is mine, is to really, we, we have tenants that we really haven't had problems in there with our other lease, you know, like the, the Head Start lease, for example. We don't solicit new tenants for, you know, the other property that we lease on a regular basis. We have somebody in there and, you know, they're an established tenant. We don't have issues with them, so our practice has been just to renew leases when we have tenants in there. And in this case, I know that there's been an adjacent property owner that has expressed some interest in, in farming this property. You know, from my understanding with talking with the parks director was that when she made them aware that there was already, you know, seed in the ground for the, the coming spring, they kind of backed off a little bit. But, you know, we certainly could shorten the term, but.
That would be, that would, have we done five years before? Is that what we've always done?
They've, they've been five years, and with an ag lease, because there's an investment in the soils, you know, in fertilizing and, and working the soils to prep it for more than one year. That, that's why we, we did it for multiple years. And that was through talking, you know, talking with some of the farmers that had expressed interest, you know, as to what would be a reasonable term for them to commit to, you know, if they're going to invest in, in getting an area ready for planting. So our recommendation is to renew the leases. Follow whatever direction if, if, you know, if you want to renew them for a shorter term, or, you know.
Is there any efficacy to looking at selling those properties? I mean, if we're leasing out long-term for agriculture, I mean, I know they're, they're cancelable leases, but why we want to use that property for something else? You know, that's just what it is. But, you know, are the, is that surplus property? Is it some, do we have some reason to hold on to it?
Well, I think the Fringer Road property provides us a little bit of a buffer between the park and the residential dwellings along Fringer Road, who, many of whom expressed displeasure with the city locating a park so close to their properties. So this gives us a little bit of a buffer, so hopefully people will be less likely to encroach on private property out there. I, at this point, there's no intent to expand Bolinger Park's walking paths, but that could be done in the future if we choose to, you know, if we do retain ownership of it. The Stumptown property was originally envisioned to be a, you know, a festival-type park. Whether that comes to fruition or not, you know, remains to be seen. You know, certainly it's not in the current couple of years to really do anything with that. But I think that we will be very happy to have that acreage at some point in the future because we're already aware that, you know, even with the new fields going in at Memorial Park as part of that expansion, we're still going to be facing pressure that there's not enough field space for, you know, rec league play. So it's possible that Stumptown, the Stumptown property may end up, you know, at least initially, being used for, for, for sports fields, you know, and not its original intended purpose. I mean, that'll be up to, you know, council ultimately. But I think we are going to run into a spot where, you know, for years, we've had this acreage that we haven't developed. Well, now we're going to develop it finally, and it's not going to be adequate for very long. It's probably not going to be adequate when, when we develop it. So we're always going to be, you know, for the foreseeable future, we're going to be looking for more acreage for sports fields. So I would suggest Stumptown could lend itself to that in the future, rather than selling it.
And of course, at this point contributes to our water resource recharge. And as long as it stays park, it'll continue to.
Additional comments, questions, concerns from council regarding them? Looking for a motion in regards to the approval of twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty lease, Bolinger Park, Matthew Clark.
Motion to approve.
For a second. Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carrie's, next up, approval of twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty lease, Festival Park, Robert Bowers. Looking for a motion in regards to that? Looking for a second. Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carrie's, up next, we've got approval of special event permit, Alessa Richards Card Show, Memorial Park, October fourth, twenty twenty-five. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Motion to approve the special event permit.
Looking for a second.
Second. There, Jim's got it.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Carrie's, up next, we've got annexation three, thirty-three hundred Fringer Road. Questions, comments, concerns by council?
We're just looking for you to direct staff to pursue an annexation agreement and begin the, the process.
So it'll be, we'll make a, it'll be a motion if you want to direct staff to start working on the annexation of thirty-three hundred Fringer Road. Do we have a motion in regards to that?
I would, I'm, I'm, I'll move that we move forward with that annexation. And I would also urge that as part of that, we look at the other properties along there and maybe start the feeling out process of trying to include them in future annex, because they'll have to each be individually annexed, right?
We, we could annex multiple properties at once, certainly. And from the planning perspective, it would be wonderful to annex that as well as the thirty-acre parcel that's nearly encircled after the Sewell annexation and the couple individual properties on West Baltimore Street. But organizing that and, and getting the buy-in from all those property owners may be time-consuming.
I, I don't want it to hold up, I don't, well, don't want it to hold this one up. We should move forward with this, but we ought, in that vein, I, I.
We can certainly do some outreach. I mean, we, we are aware that, you know, one of those property owners has expressed interest in annexing to the city. You know, that particular property would create an enclave if others didn't come in, so.
Drop all those dominoes at once.
Right, but we can certainly, you know, reach out at least to, you know, the contiguous homes and see if there's interest.
These folks are trying to get a sale through, so we want to make sure.
So we don't want to delay things, right.
So.
But the homes adjacent are served by a private sewer lateral that has a history of, of backing backups. And years ago, the city used to go out and jet it for them, and we don't do that any longer. So the, you know, the carrot might be that, you know, they would have opportunity to revise their connection, you know, directly to a, a, right, if they, if they were to annex. So maybe there's a carrot that we can offer. But we can, we can do some outreach and see.
You make a motion.
So the mo, the motion is to accept the lease and, and, or to accept the, rather.
The annexation of thirty-three hundred.
To, to have staff start working on it.
Thirty-three hundred, I'm sorry, I was.
Second.
And just to check, Jim, again, this is just for staff to work on it currently, not the actual annexation.
Correct. We have, we have a lot of pieces to put in place before you can vote on the actual annexation.
Additional comments, questions, concerns from council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carrie's, up next, we have a word of bid for City Hall Roof Repairs. Jim, do you want to start off on that?
Gordian did go back and look at the scaffolding. So at one point in the proposal, they had included some related costs that they have since broken out in a new proposal, and they were able to trim about four thousand dollars off of the, off of the overall proposal. So the Gordian number is now at two fifty-five, one seventy-one, oh five. We did get a second proposal from Duranco Roofing and Exteriors. They, they looked at the roof, worked, met with D P W. We tried to get as close as like an apples-to-apples comparison to make sure they were using the same, you know, same rubber roofing and, and everything, the same quality materials. The only thing that I'm aware of that is a difference between the two is that Duranco was proposing using PVC trim for the upper portion of City Hall rather than wood. And that would have been about three thousand dollars more than the wood trim would have been. But their number was two sixty-seven, five oh six, ninety-nine. So even with that three thousand dollar difference, if you were to, you know, say we want wood instead of the PVC, it's still two sixty-four. So it's still nine thousand dollars higher than, than the Gordian proposal was. So having, having a second proposal to kind of compare it to, you know, we would certainly like to move forward with the Gordian proposal that, that was before you.
I'm just not buying it. From my perspective and, and knowledge of construction cost, I'm just not buying it.
And we can certainly share the, reshare the details of, of both and see if the, the one that came in this afternoon was, was kind of a, you know, a crunch for them to get it into us before we met tonight. So we have a, a set of like individual components and then just a summary sheet that tallied everything up. So we don't have a, I guess, a full detailed, you know, one-file proposal to share, but we can share the components with you if you'd like to look at it, or we can see if the prices will hold for another month. At this point, I'm not sure of the idea of getting a third estimate because we've talked about prices publicly. Don't think that getting, you know, getting another bid is reasonable since we've talked about it.
Everybody has a target, so.
Is there a motion from council in regards to this?
I will make the motion that we award the bid for the City Hall Roof Repairs to Gordian as suggested by the city manager and D P W.
Is there a second? Further comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carrie's, up next, we have council member reports, start with Councilmember Tillman.
I was working a lot on, on Main Street stuff, but I will just say that we are, we have a lot on our plate at, at planning. You know, there are a number of things out there as, as Mr. Gula described earlier, and we are working through those as well as working through the comprehensive plan. We have the, the raw data from the comprehensive plan survey. We had five hundred and thirteen responses, which, yes, as households, represent almost seventeen hundred people, which, you know, when you look at it in that regard, you know, was a pretty solid, pretty solid return on those, on those surveys. And so we think we have some really good information to move forward with, and we're looking forward to doing that. Of course, with the holidays, with Thanksgiving and, and Christmas coming through, and we won't get really back hard to the comp plan till, till January, so.
Because they're out this month, right?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're not meeting this month at all.
Sounds good. I'll go next with the Tynington Police Report. End service training completed by all officers, suicide by cop. The entire department completed the required annual firearms training qualifications on November seventh, twenty twenty-four, and November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. This training included classroom drills on the gun range and qualification. Specialized training, officers Darby and Myers attended TASER instructor training through Exxon and are going to be the Tynington Police Department's TASER instructors moving forward. This class was complete on November first, twenty twenty-four. Tynington Police Department Monthly Statistical Reports. Total dispatcher generated calls for service five hundred and seventy, total citations issued, state, city, and repair orders sixty. Total warning issued, total warnings issued one hundred and seventy-one, total adult arrests ten, total juvenile arrests two. Community outreach on November twenty-first, Ms. Ingalls participated in a car seat inspection event that was held in Frederick County. Approximately twenty car seats were installed and distributed. On November nineteenth, interviews were conducted at the Carroll County Career and Technology Center for our participation in their intern program. The police department has committed, has a committed intern that will be starting their internship in the coming months. Councilmember McCarron, Mayor Pratton McCarron.
I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about Main Street. We ought to talk about there, and anything I say is going to be. But I do want to commend Miesch and the city and, and the council for moving forward with Mike Hillman and, and developing a Tynington record-style paper that will be similar to his other publications. Mike's an experienced newspaper guy who is, uh, has success in all the towns around us, and I, and I, I support this effort one hundred percent. I'm waiting to see how it develops. I think it'll be an answer to prayer, quite frankly. I think it'll be able to give the business community a shot in the arm and experience some first-class advertising that we've lacked in the past. So that's about all I want to say about the, about that. But, um, but about that decision.
Councilmember Foster?
Department of Public Works. The, the lead line survey and records inspection has been submitted to M D E. The next step for the city is to investigate ten percent of the lines that were reported as unknown. This investigation will include sending out notices to residents to allow D P W into their homes to look at the water service lines entering the home and also digging along the service line to confirm pipe material as well. There will also be notifications sent to residents if their lines are found to be lead or galvanized and the need to have them replaced. These letters were mailed out on November eleventh. And I'd just like to remind the residents again about the holiday trash collection due to Christmas and New Year's Day falling on Wednesday this year. Trash and recycling will be collected on Thursday, December twenty-sixth and Thursday, January second. There will be a collection of Christmas trees on Saturday, Jan. There will be a collection of Christmas trees on Saturday, January 11.
Sounds good. Councilmember Fuller?
The Christmas tree lighting was held this past Saturday at Memorial Park, starting at 4:30 PM with the candy cane hunt, followed by Santa's arrival at 5:30 PM. Food trucks were on hand for hot food and warm beverages. We also had glitter tattoos, wagon rides, and singers from Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church. We had a decent turnout considering the cold weather of about 200 or so people. Many thanks to all who made the event possible. Our holiday decorating contest is currently running from December 1 to 31st. Those interested in entering should email Lorena by this Friday, December 13. Winners will receive gift cards from local businesses. We received a donation of a park bench from the Health Department. It's a purple suicide and substance abuse awareness bench that was installed at the large red and blue playground at Memorial Park. We want to thank the Health Department for this donation, for community outreach, and to the Department of Public Works for installing the bench. Local Boy Scout Zach Smock will be installing birdhouses at Bollinger Park for his Eagle Scout project. Zach's older brother is the one who installed the story stroll stations at Memorial Park for his scout project. Any prospective Eagle Scouts looking for a project in our parks are encouraged to contact Lorena. Our next Park and Rec Advisory Board meeting is going to be scheduled for Wednesday, January 15, immediately following the 6:30 PM TAA meeting. We are not going to be meeting in December.
I'm going to read, Jim, do we need to vote for the closed session first, or is it after? I know we do the adjournment, yeah.
Before we adjourn this, you need to read the closing. Okay, Gula?
Yeah, that's correct. Read your statement first.
Just making sure. On December 9, 2024, at 9:00 PM at City Hall, in accordance to the Maryland Open Meetings Act, Title 10, Governmental Procedures, Subtitle 5, Meetings, Section 3-305B, this meeting will be closed as closed only to consider the acquisition of real property for the public purpose and matters directly related thereto of. The following is the listed topics to be discussed. The authority in the Open Meetings Act for having such discussions is Citation 3-305B3, land acquisition to discuss negotiations relating to a real property purchase. I'm looking for a motion, oh, yeah, there's, I'm looking for a motion to go in a closed meeting.
I move we go into closed session.
Second.
Questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Sounds good. We are adjourned in a closed meeting. We will meet back up in 10 minutes.